Good morning, everybody. It's my honor to call to order this meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors for August 19th, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Lavigno.
Here.
Supervisor Hartman.
Here.
Supervisor Nelson.
Supervisor Lee.
Here.
And Chair Capps.
And I'm here. Please join us in pledging allegiance.
And let the record reflect that Supervisor Nelson is absent.
Okay. Next up is the approval of minutes from our last meeting, which has been a little while, July 15th, 2025.
So moved?
Thank you Supervisor Hartman and a second by Supervisor Lavigno. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Okay, Madam CEO, please proceed with your report.
Good morning, Board members. We have several reports this morning. The first is some celebratory news about our Child Support Services Department. They were honored with a state performance award for delivering the fastest results among medium local counties in California last fiscal year. The department also made the greatest improvement by reducing the time to open a case, establish an order, and issue the first payment to families by 31 days. This remarkable accomplishment was recognized by the state as a significant contribution to strengthening overall program performance and enhancing services for children and families. So congratulations to Meta Richardson, Department Director. Next, the County of Santa Barbara Health Department held its third annual back-to-school health fair in the first week of August at county health centers in Santa Maria, Lompoc, and Santa Barbara. Community organizations and county departments were present to support families and children as they prepared for the new school year. Attendance this year exceeded the past two years, with over 2,500 families receiving backpacks filled with school supplies and other necessities. The health centers conducted 38 sports physicals, 33 immunizations, and a total of 72 doses administered. Lompoc had the highest attendance, and county health wants to thank all partners and supporters that made these events possible. And thank you again to our Director Mahana Hamami. Lastly, we wanted to give you a quick update on the 911 outage that took place last month while we were on break. So Assistant County Executive Officer Wade Horton will be giving you the update.
Lord Ma'am Chair of Board, as you know, countywide 911 outage occurred on July 22nd. And this was caused by a construction crew cutting Frontier fiber lines while working on the De La Vina Street Bridge project in the city of Santa Barbara. And with this, it temporarily disrupted our voice calls to emergency dispatch and also impacted the FAA operations at the Santa Barbara Airport. All local public safety answering points quickly shared alternative numbers and promoted the use of text to 911, which remained fully operational even though the voice calls were disrupted. The County Office of Emergency Management issued alerts through Ready SBC, and dispatchers maintained steady service using tools like Rapid SOS to reconnect dropped calls. A total of 172 emergency contacts were received. 98 of those were through text to 911. Text to 911 is always available in Santa Barbara County, offering a vital option for people who are deaf, hard of hearing, speech impaired, in unsafe situations, or during voice outages with language translation support. Residents are reminded to call if you can, text if you can't, and to always include their exact location when texting 911. The city and county have conducted a joint meeting with Frontier, and an evaluation is currently underway to identify any additional choke points in the fiber network so redundancy can be established, with the goal to prevent any widespread critical system outages in the future. I also have with me here this morning Susan Farley from Sheriff Dispatch and Chris Sherwin from IT Department to answer any technical questions you may have.
Supervisor Lavigno.
Just for clarification, this was not our construction crew, correct?
This was not a county project.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thanks for the update. I really appreciate it because I joined the many who was alarmed that this could even happen, but also was relieved to understand that dropped calls were actually responded to. I don't know if someone can explain how that actually happened, and what a relief that that did happen.
Good morning. My name is Susan Farley. I'm the manager of the communications center at the sheriff's office. We have a tool called Rapid SOS. It's primarily a location enhancement system, but what it does, backing up a little bit, the way 911 works, you call from your cell phone, it hits a tower, tower goes to the central office, central office routes it to where it needs to be. Soon as it hit that central office, it died because of the fiber cut. However, the standalone system, which is called Rapid SOS, still captured those phone numbers as soon as it hit the central office. So they showed up on the internet for us, so we knew someone was trying to call, and we were able to call those numbers back. So we have Rapid Deploy and Rapid SOS in the form that we use. They're both free programs. So everyone in the county has the ability to use them. Not everyone in the county uses them. Rapid Deploy is another system. That's how we do our text to 911. It does have the same ability. It's just a little harder to see the list of people who are calling in.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, again, good work and fast thinking to be able to make sure that all those calls were still answered, even though they didn't go through as they were intended to. And second question is about this text. I also didn't know that you could text 911, so now we know that. I know that Ms. Girkens has been trying to get the word out. So how can we do more to get the word out, especially to senior homes, et cetera, that texting 911 is an option? I understand from Mr. Horton's presentation that that's not the first option, but it is a option. How can we get the word out? That's a hard thing to communicate.
I would say something you need to continue to advertise, but really we push call if you can, text if you can't. We answer over 99% of our 911 phone calls within 10 seconds. Text to 911, we answer about 50, and the range is very large just because the analytics program I use, between 20 and 60 seconds, because you have to actually open it, read it, respond. So there is a delay. So it's call if you can, text if you can't. Years ago, we had a child with their parent that was driving drunk on the 154. So he was able to text his location to us without alerting his parent. Which obviously resulted in an amazing outcome, but if you're just texting, "The house was broken into", that's less helpful because the exchange takes significantly longer. So it really is for those times where you can't, and one of the happy accidents is we found that your internet is more stable, and cell phones in general are more stable on text than landline. So even if you have almost no bars, you may be able to text us, and that will still come through. So it's a great alternate option, but it should not be the first thing.
The first option. And how long has it been possible to text 911?
Since 2020. I believe we did a launch in 2021 with the campaign, "Call if you can, text if you can't", but I feel it goes like this on when people understand it. I was looking at our numbers of how many we've received. So this year, just through July 31st, it's over 4,000. The next biggest year was in 2021 where it was around 2,000. So we don't receive a lot. It's well less than 2% of our overall 911 contacts, but it is available, and it's available to everyone in the county. All of the primary PSAPs have access to it.
And that period of time where 911 was not functioning properly, what was the number that you said that people chose to text 911?
We had 98 contacts. So generally, a contact, you probably want to cut that in half because they text us, we say, "Do you have an emergency?" No matter how much PIO is pushed out, please only call 911 or text 911 if you need it. A large chunk of our contacts that day were, "Are you really down?", and the answer was, "Yes, but we're still calling you. We're still here for you."
Well, that's a searing story of a child texting 911 when their parent was driving intoxicated. So lastly, I know from talking to Director Sherwin, our IT Director, that this has been a real alarm bell for all of the folks involved, the city managers, the different providers, the internet providers, the vendors, Frontier, Cox, et cetera, and there's more communication, so to speak, that's happening now that hasn't necessarily happened at the level it should have happened. So I'm pleased to know that that's occurring. I believe that there's a lot more robust conversations about redundancy and making sure that this never happens again. I see his head nodding, so thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you so much.
That concludes my report, Chair.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that report. And Madam Clerk, are there any announcements or changes to our agenda?
Chair Capps and members of the board, I have a few announcements this morning. We received a request from the Planning and Development Department to continue departmental item number one regarding a report on case number 24 APL 6, Bidwell Appeal of Mariposa Investment Trust Agricultural Waterwell, Eastern Galita Valley Community Plan Area in the Second District. The requested continuance is to the board meeting of September 9th, 2025 in Santa Barbara. And lastly, for the Board of Supervisors, methods of public participation and to provide public comment on general public comment or an item on the board's agenda, please see Page 2 of the agenda. Individuals that would like to provide verbal public comment may do so via Zoom by registering in advance via the link available on Page 2. If you have any questions, please contact the Clerk of the Board's office at area code 805-568-2240. Again, that number is 805-568-2240. And that concludes my announcements for today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item of business is the administrative agenda. Would any board members like to pull any items? Wow. Supervisor Nelson is not here. I think that might be a first, that we do not have any items pulled. We will make note of that when he returns. Maybe I do have one. I spoke too quickly. I have one, A14. We'll go to that one. Actually, I'll entertain a motion to approve the balance of the administrative agenda except for the one that I pulled.
Chair Capps, members of the board, we do have one request to speak from the public on A6 as well.
Okay. A6 and A14. So may I get a motion for approve the balance of the administrative agenda except for those two items.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Motion passes. Okay, next item of business is resolutions to be presented. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, will you please read administrative item number one into the record?
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number one is sponsored by Supervisor Capps. It is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of August 2025 as Child Support Awareness Month in Santa Barbara County. And joining us in person today, we have Meta Richardson, Director of Child Support Services, Amanda Gonzalez, Child Support Supervisor, and Lucia Reyes, Child Support Manager. And if you can please make your way to the podium, I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas August is recognized as Child Support Awareness Month, a yearly observance dedicated to highlighting the essential role child support plays in the well-being and economic stability of children and families. And whereas the Child Support Program has adopted significant improvements, including expanded pass-through payments for families formally receiving cash aid, revised policies that provide formerly incarcerated parents more time to reestablish themselves before resuming payments, and the cessation of certain enforcement actions. Whereas these reforms reflect a commitment to fairness, equity, and family well-being, and aim to foster co-parenting relationships while reducing the burden and cost of private legal intervention. And whereas Santa Barbara County Child Support Services serves nearly 9,500 child support cases, distributing 28.5 million in annual support to families and children. And whereas Santa Barbara County Child Support Services continues to offer comprehensive and highly accessible services that help families and children receive the support they deserve. And whereas during the month of August, Santa Barbara County Child Support Services will be promoting public awareness of the Child Support Program through participation in public health back-to-school health fairs, outreach to social services, staff and clients, engagement at Downtown Fridays, Spanish radio segments, legislative updates on the department's website, and the annual school supply distribution at the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Maria. And now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resumed. And now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resolved, that this Board of Supervisors proclaims August 2025 as Child Support Awareness Month in Santa Barbara County, passed and adopted today.
Good morning, Chair Capps and members of the board. My name is Lucy Reyes, Child Support Manager of the Department of Child Support Services. I am thrilled to be a part of our department's outreach efforts for Child Support Awareness Month. Joining me is Amanda Gonzalez, a Child Support Supervisor and a dedicated member of the outreach team. Each August, we recognize Child Support Awareness Month, both nationally and throughout California. This observant serves as a meaningful opportunity to highlight the essential services available through the Child Support Program, and to reinforce our commitment to supporting families. Our goal is to help families co-parent successfully by providing accessible and effective support. And this year, we would like to acknowledge the significant legislative efforts that continue to improve the Child Support Program, making it more fair, efficient, and family-centered. This year's statewide theme is "New Laws, New Approach: Our Best Deal," reflects our continued progress and dedication to better serving California families. At this time, I'd like to invite Amanda to share more about the activities and initiatives planned in recognition of Child Support Awareness Month.
Thank you, Lucy. Good morning, Chair Capps and members of the board. I'm excited to share the impactful partnerships we built in the community in celebration of Child Support Awareness Month. In collaboration with the Department of Child Support, Department of Social Services, we've launched a multi-channel outreach campaign to their clients, featuring a recorded voice message, a mass text, and a flyer with the warmer words, "Child Support for a Brighter Tomorrow." We will also be presenting to their staff next week on recent legislative changes and how working together can strengthen the families in our community. Participating in events such as Downtown Fridays in Santa Maria, public health fairs countywide, food distribution at Little House in the Park in Guadalupe, and promoting Child Support Awareness on La Mejor radio station helps us build vital visibility in the communities we serve. On August 6, we participated in community, parole and community team packed resources day, sharing key legislative updates, such as the reduction in driver's license suspensions for non-payment of child support, and extended timeframes to secure employment post-incarceration before child support obligations resume. And just last week, on August 14th, we distributed school supplies at the Santa Maria Boys and Girls Club and connected with families about available child support services. Together with our partners, we remain dedicated to empowering families, strengthening communities, and building a brighter future for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next resolution, please.
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number two is sponsored by Supervisor Capps and Supervisor Nelson. It is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of August 2025 as Emergency Management Awareness Month in Santa Barbara County. And joining us in person today from the Office of Emergency Management, Kelly Hubbard, Stacy Silva, JD Saccido, Brittany Farrell, Roger Wilcox, Jackie Ruiz, and Kendall Johnston. And I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas local emergency managers across all sectors and community leaders dedicate countless hours to developing preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation programs to protect the lives and property of all people living and visiting Santa Barbara County. And whereas emergency managers are charged with establishing and maintaining the local capabilities necessary to effectively coordinate and support disasters, response, and recovery efforts. And whereas emergency managers are often one of the first to respond and the last to leave after disaster working behind the scenes as first responders for our community. And whereas the Santa Barbara County Office of Emergency Management maintains collaborative partnerships with governmental and non-governmental agencies to promote personnel and agency preparedness, mitigation, response, and recovery. And whereas emergency managers are committed to continue learning, leadership, and innovation through the maintenance of plans, training programs, and policies that align with local, state, and federal regulations. And whereas emergency managers must maintain awareness and adaptability in the face of disasters impacting Santa Barbara County. And whereas the efforts of local emergency managers have helped community members prepare for, respond to, recover from disasters while strengthening the resilience of our county. And whereas an investment into local emergency management programs is a commitment to the resilience of all who live and vacation in Santa Barbara County. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resolved, that this Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors today.
Thank you, Chair Capps, board. Today marks my sixth year with the county, approximately 25 years in the business, and I'm still trying to explain to people that being an emergency manager does not mean I drive an ambulance and I do EMS. And I think many people here who work for the county think that what my team does is call them and annoy them to get them to come work in the EOC, or to come to a training, or to participate in an emergency planning process. In the last three-ish weeks, we've responded, July 23rd to the 911 outage, July 29th and 30th to the tsunami advisory for our county, and starting August 1st to the Gifford fire. Along the same timeline, we had multiple PSPs, Public Safety Power Shutoffs. We had multiple other smaller incidents, and my staff continued to do their normal duties as they could, with over 500 hours in duty officer time spent on those incidents, most of that unpaid overtime. And so what we do is not emergency medical services. What we do is not just call and try to get you to a training or to the EOC. We work on concepts such as managing grants, fiscal and equipment readiness, making sure the cache of supplies that were in New Cuayama this last couple of weeks were available to the residents to help them with the smoke that they were experiencing. Emergency plans and procedures. We work on, JD will know the exact count, but dozens of emergency plans that are the county's, as well as have the responsibility to review every jurisdiction, over 100 in our county, their emergency plans, when they ask or request to see if it's in alignment with our county planning with state protocols and procedures. We have hundreds of after-action items from previous incidents that we continue to try to incorporate into our planning and our daily efforts, so that when we do get to that emergency that may occur, that will occur, we're not repeating previous or past mistakes. That emergency plan and procedures process includes over 20 new legislative requirements in less than 10 years. Managing software systems such as Genesis and Everbridge, Yoners is online watching and available, who has been managing the launch of Genesis in the middle of the Gifford Fire. Public education and information, making sure our public and our community understands how to prepare and be more resilient. Trainings and exercises, thank you to this board and your staff for all the training, all attending elected official training, county staff, you're not the only one, this board goes to. And legislative and policy engagement to ensure that those future legislative efforts don't impact us negatively, but support and help raise up our community and our efforts to become more resilient. Daily, we work on building partnerships that become alliances during incidents, such as with direct relief in the Gifford Fire just recently, when we worked with them to have masks and HEPA filters delivered out to New Cuayama. And we run our duty officer program, as noted, where my staff rotate every week, they are on-call 24/7. They can't go out drinking, they can't go out and do certain things, and they have to be ready and available to help with alerting and response, and to help manage and bring in those who help us do what we do. So we write the plans, we get us prepared as a county, we hope to make us more resilient, but it's all the county staff here who also help in that effort, and so my team hopes to make sure that they're all ready for that challenge when it comes. I do want to note that we are not the only group with emergency managers in our county. Public Health and Department of Social Services both have emergency managers as well, and they should also be recognized today. I had a peer say that it is Emergency Awareness Month, Kelly, not Emergency Appreciation, when I used a slip of terminology, and I said, "The problem is, is that showing appreciation also brings awareness." So I want to thank my team for everything that they do to keep this county prepared and ready, and hopefully resilient in the future, and thank all of you for your support of that. Thanks.
Well, since we're expressing appreciation and in the long list of things that you did, I didn't hear how much you work out in the community with organizations, tabling at events, and helping people understand the risks, and also that we have a good planning infrastructure here in our county, and it, it makes me sleep better at night, knowing what an experienced professional set of emergency managers we do have. Thank you.
Supervisor Lee.
Kelly, I just want to say thank you to you and your team for your effective and appreciated work recently with the Gifford Fire. It really made a difference in the Cuayama community, and they appreciate you and your team coming out, so thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Lee. I also have to recognize Martha Upez from the Family Resource Center, who is just amazing in serving the community out there.
Yeah, and I just want to add my appreciation. It's good to be able to look at your team and to acknowledge the others that aren't here in the room. What an honorable profession to go into this kind of line of work. Not only the training, but you really, you and your team, you worry about so many things so that others don't have to worry about it. I was just thinking, you know, just the mental toll of worrying about disasters on a daily basis, so that, so that all of us don't have to be thinking about it every day. So thank you for that and the work that everybody does. Really appreciate it. Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we will move on to the next item.
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number three is sponsored by Supervisor Hartman. It is to adopt a resolution in recognition of the 100th anniversary of the San Onofre News. And joining us in person today, we have Claudia Delgado. Is Claudia Delgado here? Well, I can go ahead and still read the resolution.
Sure.
If the board would like.
Sure.
Whereas, the San Onofre Valley News was founded in 1925 and has served as the trusted voice of the San Onofre Valley for 100 years, documenting the growth, milestones, and stories of our community with integrity and dedication. And whereas, through a century of local reporting, the San Onofre Valley News has played a vital role in informing residents, supporting local democracy, and preserving the unique culture and heritage of the region. And whereas, the newspaper has chronicled generations of life in the valley, from agriculture and education to business, sports, arts, and community events, all while adapting to a rapidly changing media landscape. And whereas, the San Onofre Valley News has nurtured civic pride and upheld the principles of journalistic excellence, becoming a cornerstone of our local identity and a reliable source of accurate, timely, and thoughtful news coverage. And whereas, we recognize the dedication of the journalists, editors, publishers, and photographers, and staff, past and present, whose passion and professionalism have built and sustained this legacy for a century. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resolved, that this Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Barbara does hereby congratulate the San Onofre News on the occasion of its 100th anniversary, and commends its remarkable contributions to the life and identity of the San Onofre Valley, with sincere appreciation for a century of service to our community, passed and adopted today.
Thank you. Well, local newspapers, papers everywhere in our country are facing real headwinds, but local papers, as the resolution said, really are vibrant in the lifeblood, and people are interested. And so I'm really grateful that the San Onofre News has, Valley News has sustained and keeps its subscription rate and interest, because it really does knit us together as a wider community, so it's much appreciated.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next resolution.
Chair Capps and members of the board, administrative item number four is sponsored by Supervisor Hartman. It is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of August 2025 as World Breastfeeding Month in Santa Barbara County. And joining us in person today, we have Meg Baird, Chantal Hover Jones, and Angela Fickner from the Lompoc Valley Medical Center. And anyone else that you would like to join with you? And I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas, World Breastfeeding Month in August 2025 adopts the theme "Prioritize Breastfeeding, Create Sustainable Support Systems," which is a call to build lasting equitable support for breastfeeding parents everywhere. County of Santa Barbara Health Department supports this goal through dedicated efforts to promote, protect, and sustain breastfeeding in our community. And whereas, decades of research indicate that breastmilk provides optimal nutrition for children and breastfeeding benefits both lactating parents and babies. Breastmilk contains 3 million antibodies per teaspoon. The optimal nutrition in breastmilk contributes to reduction in the incidence and severity of diseases such as type 2 diabetes, respiratory and ear infections, obesity, asthma, and sudden infant death syndrome. And whereas, county health has multi-layered lactation support services with highly trained staff at each site, including the WIC program, MCAH, and federally qualified health centers. County of Santa Barbara's WIC program maintains one of the highest exclusive breastfeeding rates in California, reaching 41.6% as of March 2025, compared to the statewide WIC average of 21%. And whereas, the Regional Breastfeeding Liaison Program promotes seamless breastfeeding support by collaborating with healthcare providers, hospitals, and employers, and the community. Recent efforts focus on assisting Lompoc Valley Medical Center, LVMC, to increase exclusive breastfeeding rates, improve care for the parent-baby diet, and reduce racial disparities by becoming the first hospital in California to enroll in a CHAMPES national program, a CDC-funded initiative that provides expert training and support to implement the 10 steps to successful breastfeeding. Join us on August 29th at LVMC to celebrate breastfeeding. And whereas, 2025 marks an important milestone for the County of Santa Barbara Health Department, its 100th anniversary. We hope to continue and advance support of breastfeeding needs throughout our county, including assisting with milk supply and supporting clients returning to work or school. A breastfed baby leads to a healthy individual, a healthy community, and a healthy environment. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resolved, that this Board of Supervisors of Santa Barbara County does hereby acknowledge World Breastfeeding Month, passed and adopted today.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair Capps and supervisors. My name is Chantal Hover Jones, and I am the Regional Breastfeeding Liaison for the County of Santa Barbara Health Department's WIC program. I'm honored to be here today on behalf of our families across the county and our communities, and thank you so much for recognizing Breastfeeding Awareness Month with this important proclamation. Breastfeeding is a powerful public health strategy. It supports the lifelong health and well-being of both infants and parents. It reduces the risk of chronic disease, promotes infant development, and strengthens the parent-infant bond. In Santa Barbara County, we are committed to helping families reach their breastfeeding goals by providing education, culturally responsive support, and connections to local services. We are proud to have some of the highest breastfeeding rates in California and the country. Awareness and policy port like this proclamation are vital in creating a community where breastfeeding is truly supported and celebrated. Thank you again for acknowledging the importance of this work and for continuing to champion the health of our youngest residents and families. I will now pass the mic to Angela Fickner, the manager of Perinatal Services at Lompoc Valley Medical Center, to share about the exciting work being done in Lompoc. Thank you.
Thanks for having me here. We're excited to share some of the things that Lompoc is implementing. We have been working very hard with CHAMPES International for our breastfeeding support for our patients in our community, and we've seen some great improvements with our exclusive breastfeeding rates and our breastfeeding initiation rates. Our breastfeeding initiation rates for the last two quarters of this year have been 85% with 100% initiation in the month of June, so it's definitely working. A big project that we've been working on is skin-to-skin after both vaginal and C-section deliveries. It's been happening quite a while for vaginal deliveries, but to have C-section deliveries be able to have their baby placed on their chest in the OR for that entire remainder of their state in the OR, and then moving on to the PACU. So our goal is to keep a mother and baby together, and it helps with the transition of the infant, and then also establishing breastfeeding. So it's a big accomplishment. For our patients that do need a little bit of extra help with support while they're learning breastfeeding and that, going down that. Seen by a lactation consultant, and then we also have three nurses who are lactation educators as well. So they are seen regularly in the hospital, and then if we do have an infant that needs a little bit of extra support, we have donor breastmilk available to them, so they don't have to move to formula. have to move to formula. And then after patients are discharged, we offer outpatient lactation visits so they have continued follow-up and continued care in their breastfeeding journey. As mentioned, we're having a big public outreach event on August 29th. We're going to have a lot of breastfeeding support resources there and community resources for all of our families that are in the Lompoc area. And we just want to thank you for letting us come and share some continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's see. We will move on to the next item.
Chair Caps and members of the board, administrative item number five is sponsored by Supervisor Hartman. It is to adopt a resolution of commendation honoring Sherman Henson upon his retirement from the Community Services Department after over 35 years of faithful and distinguished service to the citizens of Santa Barbara County. And joining us today is Sherman Henson. Now go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas Sherman Henson is retiring from the Community Services Department after over 35 years of devoted and distinguished public service to the residents of Santa Barbara County. And whereas Sherman began his county career at age 19 as an extra help park ranger, trainee, and advanced through the ranks, serving as park ranger, maintenance leader, department business specialist, park operations manager, and ultimately business manager of the fiscal division. And whereas Sherman made lasting contributions to the Community Services Department, bringing adaptability, creativity, and a spirit of innovation while providing fiscal stewardship of a combined annual budget of approximately 27 million for the Parks and Arts and Culture Division. And whereas under Sherman's leadership, some of Santa Barbara County's most iconic and well-loved public destinations, including the Lompoc and Santa Barbara Veterans Memorial Buildings, Kachuma Lake Recreation Area, Halama Beach, and the historic Santa Barbara County Courthouse, remained vibrant and widely utilized with over 37,000 reservations over the last four years. And whereas Sherman fostered a culture of collaboration and mentorship, earning the respect of colleagues across the department and supporting the professional growth of staff through a steady leadership and example. And whereas Sherman and his wife Becky look forward to their next chapter with plans to eventually relocate to Northern California and following Becky's retirement, continue their adventures traveling across North America in their RV. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resolved that this Board of Supervisors honors and thanks Sherman Henson for his years of dedicated service to the residents of Santa Barbara County and congratulates him upon his retirement, passed and adopted today.
Chair Caps and members of the board, Susarmes, Community Services Director. As the resolution indicated, Sherman started working for the county when he was a baby. And now he's an adult. Words are inadequate to convey what Sherman represents, not only to our department, to the Parks Division, but really to the county organization as a whole. He exemplifies a commitment to service. He exemplifies being responsive and he exemplifies doing the best he can to make sure that the needs of the residents and our various customers are met. He epitomizes what I think this county values, which is excellent customer service. We're all going to miss him, of course. He's going to be missed not only within our organization but elsewhere. As noted in the resolution, he's had some remarkable impacts across this county. Halama Beach was one of his early assignments and he really speaks of it very highly, as do individuals who worked with him. What can we say except Sherman is a remarkable individual, a remarkable employee. We want to thank Becky for sharing him. We consider that a sharing. She actually called and said, "Thank you for taking him." So as Sherman ends his workday experience and embarks on his leisure day life, on behalf of the members of the department, we want to say thank you and we wish you well.
Chair Caps and members of the board, my wife just told me I looked nervous and she said, "You never looked nervous." Now I'm nervous, so. I stayed in the resolution. I started at 19 years old, cleaning restrooms, emptying trashcans, working the front years later. As a humble and thankful person, it's been an amazing career. When I was 19, I never dreamed that I would, I basically accomplished all my career goals, again, starting a seasonal and worked my way up to business manager, which was something I'd been working for, for about 20 years. I have a lot of people I could thank, but none more than my wife Becky. We've been together for 33, almost 33 years, it'll be 33 in January of the 35, so she's been there to support me the whole way. And it's her love and her support all those years, working as a park ranger, going to school. I spent five years, five out of seven years going to school and working full-time to get my MBA and she was there to support, support me the whole way. So thank you. I appreciate it. I also want to thank your board and CEO Miio Sato and her team. A lot of what we do in community services, the county has not mandated to fund, which tells me you choose to fund it because I think you believe, as I do, that having robust parks and open spaces, arch programs, libraries, housing, and sustainability programs are an important part of a thriving community. I know there are some uncertain fiscal times coming up, but I also know with your guidance and the leadership of CEO Miio Sato that you will continue to fund these programs. And finally, I would like to thank my CSD family. I know many of them wish I was not going as soon as, not going right now. And I know that, that word family gets tossed around a lot, but strong families are there to support each other when times get tough. And my personal family has taken some hits in the last four and a half years. Both my parents passed away. My sister-in-law unexpectedly passed away at 47. And in the middle of that, my wife was diagnosed with breast cancer and battled breast cancer and happy to say in February she's been, or sorry, May, four years cancer-free, so. And during all this, this tough time, my CSD family was there and it was more than just work. While they did help, help out, because I missed quite a bit of work with all that going on. It was the things outside of work they did. There was almost daily texts and phone calls from people just checking on Becky and I. A lot of them are friends with Becky and they text her directly, just making sure we okay, or just the simple words of, "Hey, we're thinking of you." So I will miss all of you very much, but I'm also very excited to start this new chapter in my life. Thank you.
Well, Sherman, congratulations. I feel, I feel for the people, I know you're going to hit an RV and traveling, it sounds like. But I feel for those park rangers that, that you're going to be rolling up on because they have no clue, you know? Yes, those trashcans need to be emptied and they can be, so congratulations. It's been great working with you and I just wish you all the best.
Thanks, thanks Supervisor Lavigno.
Congratulations. That's wonderful. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the administrative items that have been pulled by the board or the public.
Chair Caps and members of the board, administrative item number six is from the Agricultural Commissioner and Weights and Measures Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding Pest Detection Agreement 25-0002-047-SF with the California Department of Food and Agriculture, CDFA. We have one request to speak from the public on this item and we are going to remain here in Santa Barbara with Karen Howenstein. Karen?
Did you call me up?
Yes, please proceed.
I'm here to talk to you today about the application of poisons to our fields. It's very apropos that Joan and Laura are both wearing green today because I'm talking about green and sustainable practices. We need to focus on the commercial farming that frames our communities, particularly the agricultural easements controlled by the Land Trust of Santa Barbara County around all of our communities in Santa Barbara County. I have spoken at length with field workers and management, commercial farming consultants and contractors, the people in the white suits who apply the chemicals at night. This is no more a request, it is a demand. To honor acceptable practices, particularly regarding developing appropriate setbacks for the perimeters of our communities, to mandate organic farming with sustainable practices and no chemical spraying next to and into our homes. Our population density will only get higher. You must act now to protect families, seniors, children right here in Santa Barbara County. When you place the pesticides and rodenticides to the fields right next to houses, right next to houses in densely populated communities, that the population's only going to increase. It creates a lot of liability because we're dealing directly with people's health. Please start to use acceptable practices by establishing these needed setbacks. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I, may I please get a motion on item A6?
Move Staff Recommendation?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is A14, which I pulled.
Chair Caps and members of the board, administrative item number 14 is from the Community Services Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding an agreement with Showers of Blessing Santa Barbara.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk. I pulled this item just because I wanted to acknowledge our Human Services Commission for having awarded this wonderful nonprofit, Showers of Blessing. Jackie Goodman is here from the organization with $26,000. I remember when Showers of Blessing got going with just a few showers and now there are 4,000 showers. And we have such a strong, bless you, partnership with the county. 4,000 showers means 500 people have been served with the dignity of a shower, but it's not just a shower. It's a fresh, literally a fresh start every day. And also, what I think is really important, the chance for our county services to be present. So that means enrolling in CalFresh, enrolling in county services, having access to so many services and information that is important while people show up and receive those services. So I just want to acknowledge Jackie who's here. I don't think you need to say anything, but I just want to give gratitude and acknowledge the, the work of Human Services Commission for awarding this grant to you all. I know those $26,000 will go a long way in serving people, so thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I will move Staff Recommendation for this to be awarded.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that wraps up our administrative agenda and we can move on to general public comment. And that's a time for members of the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any requests?
Chair Caps and members of the board, we have six requests to speak on general public comment today and we will remain here in Santa Barbara and begin with Yvonne Soldano to be followed by Emily Galarte. Oh, okay, we will, we'll come back to Yvonne. We'll begin with Emily Galarte to be followed by Brenna Bolt. Emily?
Hi, my name is Emily Galarte. Sorry. I'm an IHSS worker in Santa Barbara County. I currently take care of my husband and to help my daughter. My husband has chronic back pain and hip pain from, he had a car accident and my daughter recently started having seizures. I used to work for the county and for the city, but due to my husband's health issues, I needed to be at home to be able to provide care for him. If we aren't able to receive the, the pay increase, it will make it so that I have to get another job to be able to make ends meet, which will change the quality of care that I am able to provide for my family members and IHSS recipients. I understand that I am not the only one doing this and that there are many of us out there that may have to find employment elsewhere. Many of our counties most vulnerable will, will go without care because of the short-sighted financial outlook of the board. The number of IHSS recipients is expected to grow over 50%, 52% in the, over the next five years, but wages are not keeping the pace with demand and as numbers of recipients grow and the caregiver shortages grows as well, we're simply not paying people enough to keep this career attractive and sustainable. But this board can fix this problem if it chooses to do so. There's only one solution to this looming crisis. You must offer a wage that allows IHSS workers to do this work. By offering a fair wage, we can build sustainable workforce that meets the demands for caring for aging population and for those that have medical issues. Thank you.
We will now go to Brenna Bolt to be followed by Yvonne Soldano. And before Brenna speaks, I did just want to clarify for the record, there are a number of our public speakers during the general public comment period that are speaking on a closed session, agenda item, under Conference with Labor Negotiators, Employee Organization, United Domestic Workers of America. So I did just want to note that for the record.
No, I'm Yvonne Soldano and she thought she was going to speak.
Oh, yes, whichever one wants to go first, just please state your name for the record first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne Soldano. I'm an IHSS worker and a member of my union, UW, UDW. I care for my 92-year-old father who is lost without the services of IHSS. The sad truth is eventually we will all need care someday. Think about the quality of care you would want for your loved ones. Fair wages mean IHSS workers will be healthy and productive, providing the best possible care to those who need it the most. I'm here to urge the board to give caregivers like me the wages and benefits we deserve. Here's the reality, you can't afford not to. The caregiver crisis in Santa Barbara County is real and urgent. If IHSS workers are not paid fairly, many will leave work to find better pay elsewhere. There will also be ever-increasing shortages of caregivers and our county's most vulnerable populations will go without the care they need and deserve. For those IHSS workers who choose to stay, low wages you are offering are setting them up to be trapped in a cycle of poverty. Currently, many caregivers qualify for public assistance, showing that their wages are insufficient to meet basic needs. As caregivers, we experience a high degree of stress and often unaware of available services and supports. Meanwhile, rent, food, and stress keep climbing. This degraded quality of life directly leads to degraded care. Paying IHSS workers the same as public healthcare workers we are is not just morally right thing to do, it is a sound investment in our public health infrastructure. Without fair wages, we risk not only the livelihoods of IHSS caregivers, but also the health and safety of those that need the care right now. Thank you very much for listening.
We will now go to Brenna Bolt to be followed by We will now go to Brenna Bolt, to be followed by Mary Bolden. Brenna?
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Brenna Bolt, and I've had the pleasure of getting to know many of our county IHSS providers during a summer internship with UDW. I can attest firsthand, Bolt, to how much this group of workers I've gotten to know is very hardworking and kind, but also to how much they do struggle with the cost of living in this county with their current wages. I want to speak to you today, though, from my own perspective as a local UCSB student with many peers who are interested in careers in the medical field. The last time I was at a Board of Supervisors meeting, I heard discussions about the county's new master plan for aging that had just come out, and I decided to read it. Something critical that I took away was that to care for Santa Barbara's increasingly aging population, we absolutely need more people in the caretaking profession like our own IHSS workers. Unfortunately, the current pay rate simply is not enough, or simply is not competitive enough, to attract my peers into this line of work. Young people interested in gaining medical experience are working for private retirement homes that can pay over twice as much per hour, leaving our community's vulnerable members with a critical care shortage threatening their abilities to age in place in their homes and within this community here in Santa Barbara County that we all love. Thus, I urge you all to take the experiences of our providers into account and take this necessary step towards providing a fair wage to keep up with the cost of living and to ensure the sustainability of care programs like this one that will only continue to become more and more necessary in the years to come. Thank you.
We will now go to Mary Bolden, to be followed by Larry Berrent. Bearheart, my apologies.
Hi. Hi, good morning. My name is Mary Bolden, and this is my son, Tom. I'm here to ask you to see me and all IHSS caregivers, not just as a line item in your budget, but as essential members of this community. IHSS approved me for 70 paid hours a week, but I work more than double that. I work over 140 hours caring for my high-need son. There are no days off. Even when we both had COVID, I was still on the clock crawling back into bed with him after changing his diapers, feeding him and giving his medications. And this is not just me, I know. This is a reality for thousands of caregivers in Santa Barbara County. Since 19, oh, I'm sorry, this is skilled, essential work, but it's unvalued, undervalued. Since 1996, every contract has left caregivers earning less than what it takes to survive. What began as an $8 shortfall compared to the cost of living in the 90s has now stretched to more than $10 today. Each new contract locks us further into poverty, ensuring that with every decade, the gap between what we earn and what it actually costs to live only grows wider. So I ask you, what is the purpose of raises that never improve our situation? Why call them raises at all when the outcome is always the same? Caregivers falling further behind, never rewarded and never valued for the essential work we do. We save the county millions by keeping vulnerable people out of institutions, but we can only tread water for so long before we drown. I'm asking you to raise the IHSS wage to at least $22 an hour. A living wage isn't a luxury, it's survival. Thank you for your time.
We will now go to Larry Berrent, to be followed by Karen Howenstein, who is our final speaker. Larry?
Good morning, Chair Capps, Supervisors. I'm Larry Berrent. That's a name that defies even good faith efforts to pronounce it. I'm a leader of Indivisible Santa Barbara, a member, a proud member of the 805 UndocuFund Coalition. We truly appreciate the work of the board to support our vulnerable immigrant communities, but there's much work left to do. When we last met at the July 15 meeting of this board, members of the 805 Coalition asked for $1 million in funding for nonprofit organizations providing legal defense and other services for our immigrant communities. In response, Supervisor Levinino stated, "It would be nice to have some of our other partners step up in a meaningful way to provide funding of their own." We listened. Since then, the 805 Coalition, in conjunction with other community partners, has met with elected officials and other representatives of cities in the county. Significantly, the city of Guelita has pledged $100,000 in funding, and today, the city of Santa Barbara will allocate $500,000 for this purpose. Now, the city of Santa Barbara has a budget about one-sixth that of the county, and the county's budget is roughly 20 times that of the city of Guelita. So this means on a pro-rata basis, the funding provided by Guelita and Santa Barbara is significantly larger than the $1 million we requested last month. So I echo your words, Supervisor, and we truly did appreciate those words and truly did listen. It's now time for the county to step up to match what's being done on a city level. So the 805 Coalition will be meeting soon to decide how to increase our ask for funding from the city. I'm going to frame this ask in a particular way, but I know you're all thinking about, because you've all sworn an oath to defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And it's a terrible business when the domestic enemies of the Constitution include agents of our federal government, but there it is. ICE agents, as a matter of policy, violate our First, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, and Eighth Amendment rights. How you decide as a matter of conscience you're going to respond to this, consistent with the oath that you took, freely and without any reservation, is truly an awesome matter. Everyone I know who's taken that oath regards it as a sacred pledge. I use that word sacred intentionally. I regard my work with you in the same way, as a sacred obligation, and we're here to form a sacred partnership with you. So, thank you for listening, thank you for what you've done. We regard as a down payment, not just financially, but overall, on what needs to be done. Thanks again.
And we will now go to Karen Howenstein, who is our final speaker. Karen?
Thank you, Karen Howenstein from northern Santa Barbara County. I have to make mention on the last commenter, I believe he's advocating for the labor unions. And as I understand it, the labor unions don't have illegal aliens in their membership, or do they? I'm wondering why this overlapping is happening of an organization that's supposed to represent legal workers is advocating for illegal aliens. That kind of has me a little, yeah, okay. I have, remember I was on the dais before, and I said, "We should have the Karen crime report for Santa Barbara County," because I'm the Santa Barbara County Karen? Well, I have a YouTube channel called Coast Audits, and I am actually doing that on Coast Audits. So I am pleased to report to this board that the law enforcement agencies are doing a very good job respecting First Amendment rights in Santa Barbara County with respect to recording in public places and making Freedom of Information Act requests so far. So the other issue that I'd like to discuss today is one that I've been tracking for some time. We have some liberally partisan planned HUD and HAZ Barco developments in our county. These are public housing projects that have been fully funded with money from the federal government. And I found out when I started going to these open houses and things that these developments are going in on private land that's owned by private corporations and benefits private Now, it was explained to me by the Director of HAZ Barco in a five-minute conversation I had with him at the Escalante Meadows Project in Guadalupe's grand opening, how this works. And specifically, I am interested in knowing who the unnamed owners are, who are being paid millions in perpetuity by the state of California, and I will report on Coast Audits on YouTube. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe we have one more?
Yes, thank you, Chair Capps and members of the board. We do have one final speaker on general public comment, I believe the closed session agenda item today, and that's Robert Gibson. Robert?
Thank you, Supervisors, and thank you, Chair Capps. I just would like to briefly redirect what the previous speaker stated in her opening. Karen, she merged two organizations. The folks that you spoke are heard from, that were speaking about the IHSS program and the challenges they're experiencing currently with their rate of pay and compensation, not keeping up with the cost of living here, is not related in any way to the organizations Larry spoke to and he was representing. I think he represented Indivisible and 805 UndocuFund. So he introduced himself appropriately, but I think maybe Karen did not hear that, and so she merged the issues of concern between both organizations. And I would just want to restate that with UDW, we are here representing the IHSS caregivers that the county has hired to provide services to our local residents that are either aging and in need or have disabilities, and it's no relation to the previous speaker's comments.
Yeah, we got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay.
And that concludes general public comment for today.
Okay, thanks to our members of the public for speaking. I really appreciate it. Supervisor Levinino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think, I'd kind of like to make a little bit of a public comment as well, something that I just think this would be a time to bring this up, that something that was in the news this week. And we've had many public speakers come here over the last few years claiming their county was somehow complicit.
Excuse me, if you could keep it down in the back, please.
I was just saying, we've had many speakers come before us over the last few years claiming the county was somehow complicit in election fraud because of our contract with Dominion Voting. And I know it's not going to change some people's minds, but I just wanted to alert people that this week, the cable TV network Newsmax just agreed to pay Dominion Voting $67 million to settle their defamation lawsuit related to their egregious false claims about the 2020 election. So I know this settlement pales in comparison to the Fox News 2023 settlement of $787 million that they paid to Dominion for the same kind of claims, but I think this just highlights the irreparable harm to voters' trust in the system, and so be interested to hear from folks in the future how they feel about that.
Thank you, Supervisor Levinino. Okay, with that, public comment has concluded, and we will move on to our departmental agenda.
Chair Capps and members of the board, as previously read into the record, departmental item number one is from the Planning and Development Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding a report on case number 24 APL 6, Bidwell Appeal of Mariposa Investment Trust Agricultural Waterwell in the Eastern Guelita Valley Community Plan Area in the 2nd District. And we have a request from the department to continue this item to our September 9, 2025 meeting in Santa Barbara. If we can get a motion to continue this item?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So let's move on to the second item, and then we'll take a break after, a short break after, departmental item number two. Does that sound good?
Chair Capps and members of the board, departmental item number two is from the County Executive Office. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the response to the 2024 through 2025 grand jury report on vaccination rates in Santa Barbara County.
Thank you. Dr. Hamami?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. Happy to present the response to the grand jury report. With me is Dr. Henning Ansorg, our County Health Officer, as well as Ann Carlisle, who is our Program Manager for Communicable Disease Control and Prevention. So on May 29, the Santa Barbara County Grand Jury distributed a report that was titled, "Do Vaccine Rates in Santa Barbara County Create Public Health Risk?" The report focused on the lack of data that can accurately reflect the rate of vaccination in homeschooled children, and it also had several recommendations that specifically targeted those that are in, individuals that are at high risk in settings such as the county jail. The report had five findings and five recommendations. Three of those were also directed to the Sheriff's Office with the finding and recommendations. And as always, the response should be within 90 days for the Board of Supervisors to respond to the grand jury. So we start with reiterating our commitment that we are committed to protecting the community from any risk of infection, any risk of pandemic, and all in preparedness for future outbreaks. We also acknowledge that, yes, there is some lack of data that accurately accounts for vaccines specifically in children that are homeschooled, but we also want to confirm that while this data is not complete, then there are other proxy measures that we look at, such as trends, disease outbreaks, and other tools to make sure that we have a good understanding of risks and also to assess the community immunity. We also want to acknowledge that there has been in the past two years an effort by the State Health Department in establishing this database, and we currently have the California Immunization Registry, or CARE, that has been in place for the past two years, and it's intended to capture the rates of all childhood vaccinations regardless of where they are, whether they are in schools or homeschools or what have you. The first two findings talk about data for homeschooled childrens as well as for adults. Finding one states that the lack of countywide childhood vaccination data for homeschooled children means that the county health knowledge of community immunity level is incomplete. We do agree that there is no database that captures those children that are homeschooled, not like the ones we have in schools. In fact, we presented several times that our children in schools, that are enrolled in schools, the vaccination rate is close to 97 or 98. However, those that are in homeschools, because there is no data that goes back to the timing of when these children received their vaccines, if they did, then this is not known, and it's something that is consistent across California. The recommendation by the grand jury is to require county health to study and estimate childhood vaccination levels of homeschooled children in the county, and that to be implemented by December 1st. Our response is that this will not be implemented because there is no feasible method that will reliably study and estimate or count for those vaccines in homeschooled children. So what we tried to address is that we wanted to look at, how does that reflect on what is stated in the report as herd immunity? So if, based on data that we got from the Department of Finance, there are approximately 75,000 children that are in the age of school or students, and if we take the Department of Education data of 72,000 enrolled, so that leaves roughly 3,000 children that we are assuming these are homeschooled. Assuming worst-case scenario that none of those 3,000 received any childhood vaccinations, which probably is not the case, but assuming that none of those 3,000, which is close to 4.3% of the children in school age in the county, assuming none of them received childhood vaccinations, that will drop the community immunity from 97% to 93%, which is still within the herd immunity range of 90 to 95. So therefore, even with the worst-case scenario, we do not believe that homeschooled children, if they are all if they are all non-vaccinated, are posing a risk for the herd immunity. Finding two states that there is a lack of countywide childhood vaccination data for adults, which means that the county health knowledge of community immunity level is incomplete. We do agree that there is no reliable database, and that is what CARE is trying to correct that started in January 2023. However, that doesn't mean that we do not have a knowledge of the community immunity and that is incomplete, because there are other factors that we also take into consideration. For example, childhood vaccinations are mandates for decades. It started in 1980. So we know that there has been a mandate where children are getting vaccinated. This is the same for University of California and Cal State where they have requirements for vaccines. We have vaccine reportable disease counts in the county which are very low. We do monitor wastewater surveillance, and we also know that most countries in the Americas, specifically our neighboring countries, have mandatory vaccines. So although there is no database that states the numbers exactly, then these practices would give us a comfort level that there has been an effort for childhood vaccinations. Finally, if we look at disease trends and cases confirmed of communicable diseases over the past five years since 2020, then we had zero cases of diphtheria, zero cases of measles, zero cases of mumps, and zero cases of polio. And these are all childhood vaccinations. These are preventable diseases that are prevented through vaccinations. There was one case of varicella in 2020, and there are 30 cases of pertussis. The reason there is a high number of pertussis, because when we look at pertussis, we don't only count the confirmed cases, but we also count the unconfirmed cases. So that does not mean that all 30 cases of pertussis were really pertussis. For recommendation two, the grand jury recommends that we study and estimate childhood vaccination levels of adults in the county, as well to be implemented by December 1. We will not implement this recommendation because, again, that method is not reliable, and it will basically build an assumption that if we go and ask people that are over the age of whatever, they have a recollection of whether they had their vaccines or not. And these are all assumptions, and we do not have access to the records. So while we have the CARE program that started since 2023, and it's going to build that database, we, again, look at those recommendations for anyone who is enrolled in school, or anyone who was in the Army, or anyone who served in the military. These are mandated to receive vaccines. So we know that there are other ways to count for the status of childhood immunization beside doing a lengthy survey that is also costly and labor-intensive that might not produce the reliable results that the grand jury hopes for. Findings three, four, and five specifically target those that are incarcerated and those that are in jail, and these are the ones that were also shared with the sheriff requesting a response from the sheriff's office. Finding three states that the sheriff's office has not determined childhood vaccination rates of inmates in county jails, potentially placing the inmates and staff at risk. We disagree partially. Yes, we agree that there hasn't been a determination of childhood vaccination rates of inmates in county jail, but again, that does not translate into a risk for inmates and staff, because these inmates, upon screening and intake, are, we look for symptoms, we look at everything and past history, and if there is any risk, then this is where measures are taken. Recommendation three recommends that the sheriff office collect data during health intake screening at the county jail to determine childhood vaccination rates. This will be implemented according to the sheriff. We agree that we will start, and the sheriff as well as the healthcare provider at the initial screening, start to include questions about childhood vaccinations. But we also want to consider that would augment this intake process, that if incarcerated persons attended public or private schools in California in the U.S., including University of California or Cal State, that means they have been vaccinated. So even if they do not recollect that, then that's an indication. We also know, again, neighboring countries require vaccinations, so if someone is visiting from a neighboring country, then chances are they have been vaccinated. And if they served in the military as well, then that is a mandate to be vaccinated. But yet, that intake process is going to account for gathering data of their vaccination status. Finding four states that there is no program in place at the county jail to provide childhood vaccinations to unvaccinated inmates, increasing risk of inmates and staff. We also disagree partially with an explanation. Yes, there is no program, but again, that does not place the inmates or the staff at risk. As indicated, inmates are screened for communicable diseases, and our team of communicable diseases provide advice as well as support for monitoring symptoms, and anything that might indicate a active infectious disease is promptly addressed, and if the need for isolation for symptomatic persons or quarantine of exposed patients is implemented as needed. Recommendation four states, recommends that the sheriff office implement a program to administer required childhood vaccinations to unvaccinated inmates. And the sheriff and county health agree that this will be implemented. We will offer, of course, with consent, for those that want to catch up on childhood immunizations to do so, and that is according to the current Advisory Committee of Immunization Practices' guidelines and based on risk factors. We also offer a catch-up on adult-appropriate vaccinations such as flu and COVID and others, again, as needed and with the consent of the inmate. We are currently working with the contracted jail medical provider to implement a vaccination program, as well as we have some assumptions, again, that can give us a better idea on the immunity level of our inmates. For example, for the MMR vaccine, this is measles, mumps, and rubella. If anybody is born before 1957, we assume that there is immunity because the vaccine was developed in 1960, and they had probably caught the measles and have natural immunity. The same applies for varicella, for those that were born before 1980, since the vaccine was introduced in 1995. So while, again, we do not have a exact count for the vaccination record, there are ways that we can assess risk. In addition, finally, our county health team is working on health campaigns and educational materials countywide and community-wide to promote awareness of the need of vaccinations, and that will increase the rate of childhood vaccination beyond the current rates, and we will probably ensure that everybody everywhere is vaccinated. Finally, finding five states that there is no procedure in place at the county jails on when or how to isolate unvaccinated inmates, increasing potential risk for a disease outbreak in the jails. We, again, disagree partially. We agree that there is no specific procedure for isolating unvaccinated inmates. However, if an inmate is showing any symptoms of an infectious contagious disease, then there are procedures and protocols that are implemented for isolation. The recommendation is that the sheriff office develop and enforce a procedure on when and how to isolate unvaccinated inmates to be implemented by December 1, 2025. This will not be implemented because we do not believe that unvaccinated status is an indication, solely is an indication for isolation. Isolation can do more harm psychologically for healthy people, and we do not recommend that the vaccination status should be an indication for that. However, if there are symptoms of an active and contagious infectious disease, then that is a different scenario, and certainly we will advocate for that. So our recommendation is for the board to approve and consider the items A, B, and C that were in the grand jury report, and we are here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Hartman?
I don't have any questions, but I really appreciate the grand jury report, because I think that it raised some issues, and hearing our response gives me a lot of confidence that our county is in relatively good shape. And I think a lot of that goes to our county health department. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Along the same lines as Supervisor Hartman, I feel as though I appreciate the spirit of the grand jury report, just sort of raising the fact that vaccinations are under assault, and our whole system is really being dismantled by this administration, as we've seen in the last six months. And so to know what we're doing, I don't know necessarily that homeschooling is necessarily the biggest problem that we need to be focused on. So I appreciate the way that you've answered that. But, and, you know, just, I guess I would just ask you sort of more generally, you spoke to it already, but as you see what's happening on the national level, if you could just answer more succinctly, how does it make you want to double down to make sure that we're protected locally?
I think that requires a whole different session. But we certainly are keeping track of all the changes. One of the concerns, and it's not only shared by us, but also everybody in the public health domain, are some of the changes that are coming through the ASIP, this is the Committee on Immunization and some of the guidelines from CDC. Some of the recommendations that we are hearing from other associations, like the American Public Health Association and NACHO, which is the National Association for County and City Health Officials, is that we will continue with guidelines that are specific from specialty bodies, such as the American Academy of Pediatrics and others, if we believe that the new guidelines are not going to be consistent with what we believe. So it's going to be an exciting time. However, we are truly committed to what we believe is for the benefit of our community as well as for our residents, and continuing on.
So our, let's see, our guidelines, you know, in terms of school requirements, nothing is changing in terms of, I mean, today's the last day of summer for many students here in the South Coast. Nothing's changing. You don't foresee any changes in terms of vaccine requirements?
Not yet, right?
That is correct. Nothing is changing.
And just, if you could speak to partnerships with schools, I was in touch with Superintendent Salsito this morning, just to double-check the homeschool. I just wanted to make sure my memory serves, that it is about 4% of our population, very, fairly small.
Yep.
Tiny, in fact. Just, what is the relationship with our schools when it comes to vaccinations? I know I'm broadening the grand jury's report here, but I just think it's an important opportunity, and we are back to school right now.
Good morning. I'm happy to answer that.
Sure.
So the immunization team here with county health has a very close relationship with the school districts, with
Great.
the county office of ed. They do site visits, they are in close collaboration, and actually, our schools as a whole have 100% reporting rate, which is spectacular. So across the state, they're one of very few.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, so very close. So I think those relationships are key, and on top of that, our team is very involved with community partners, with big healthcare centers, healthcare systems. They table events very frequently, consistently. So there's the relationship side with kind of the enforcement side of immunization practice, but also just being out there in the community and talking to people and understanding, you know, what is going on with hesitancy or vaccine fatigue, fine-tuning health campaigns and such. And actually, it's currently National Immunization Awareness Month, so I will say that.
Okay.
And, yeah, so a lot of things behind the scenes, and not so behind the scenes.
And are we guided by state law when it comes to vaccinations for school-age kids, or is that county, or is that federal?
That's a great question. So, yes, it's state law, and as Dr. Hamami noted, in 2023, the mandates changed so that now children that are vaccinated, that has to be entered into the system so that we have this data available. I don't know if any of you have your yellow cards from when you were a child. I certainly do not, which is why it makes this very complicated. But, yeah, to back to your question, so there are state mandates, and of course, they're following the ASIP guidelines. And one other thing I just wanted to mention that I think is very valuable, is that CDPH is really committed right now to keeping the integrity of our immunization policies, and they're talking about actually developing legislature if things go a direction that we are not comfortable with from the federal.
Right.
Yeah. So lots of discussion around this topic.
I bet, lots of preparation
Yes.
for changes, potentially. Okay, my last question just would be, I think, again, to the spirit of the grand jury's report, would be about outbreaks in our jail. I understand from your responses that that isn't, hasn't been a concern, but just, again, in your responses, I understand there's protocols, but can you just answer more succinctly, what if, what if, not just in the jail, but we have seen measles outbreaks in Texas elsewhere? What's, I know you've lived and breathed this, Dr. Ansorg, what if, you know, what if there is an outbreak of measles? Just walk us through, again, I think to get to the spirit of the grand jury's report. That's what they're worried about in issuing this report, is let's make sure we get ahead of ourselves here and not become a place that has an outbreak in one of these diseases.
Yes, thank you for that question. We have a very robust plan for such instances. So far, all measles cases were basically imported through travel.
Yeah.
So we did not have any homegrown measles cases, not even in other states. Our last measles case in Santa Barbara County was in 2019. I remember very well. That was, again, travel-related, and we were able to isolate the case and the contacts, and there were no further cases after the fact. We were able to vaccinate exposed folks very rapidly, and so we are really well-trained in addressing a potential risk on our community.
Great. Well, thank you. I mean, this is, your responses and your comments today are reassuring. I'm reassured by living in the state of California and by living in our county, but I am petrified about the clamping down of research, which is happening, and which is happening federally, the freezing of funds to go into research on emerging diseases. So that's terrifying. Anyway, other questions or comments, or I guess we can take any public comment that might be out there?
Chair Capps and members of the board, we have no request to speak from the public on this item.
Okay. With that, I will take a motion.
I move that recommendations A, B, and C.
Thank you Supervisor Lee.
Second?
We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you to the grand jury. Motion carries. Okay, we'll take, actually, I'm mending, we're just going to do the next one, is that okay? We'll do the next item. Per the clerk.
Chair Capps and members of the board, departmental item number three is from the Information Technology Department. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the Information Technology Department's three-year technology modernization plan.
Thank you. Well, good morning Chair Capps and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this morning and to provide an update on our new three-year technology modernization plan. I'm happy, as we go through this, to answer any questions you may have as well. I'm Chris Turwen, the county's chief information officer and the department director for Information Technology Department, also known as ITD. So the, you can go to the next slide, Andre, thank you. As you may recall, back in the fall of 2024, we published the countywide IT strategic plan. And the countywide IT strategic plan really focused mostly on what our kind of high-level IT strategic goals are going to be. We focused on our guiding principles. We talked about IT governance and the IT services model going forward. And so it was that plan that really spawned the modernization plan, because we recognize And so, it was that plan that really spawned the modernization plan because we recognized that even though the countywide IT strategic plan was a really important document that gave us direction of where we were going, it really wasn't detailed from an initiatives, you know, getting into the details of, okay, what are we actually going to be implementing? What are some of the projects and initiatives over the next three years? And so, we spent the last six months putting together the ITD modernization plan. It was a very comprehensive effort. We met with all functional groups and nearly every department to get their feedback as well. But the plan primarily is focused on what is ITD going to be prioritizing over the next three years. So, we broke down the modernization plan into really eight different categories, as you can see on this slide right here. We broke it into communications, cybersecurity, cloud and infrastructure, enterprise applications, governance, ITD process improvements, services and delivery, and then Workday and the Workday Support Organization. Within each of these eight categories, as you can see in the full plan, there are several initiatives along with a timeline of when we plan to accomplish or initiate those projects. So, each one of those has, as I mentioned, has a handful of initiatives that we'll be accomplishing over the next three years. So, what does this modernization plan, you know, how does it benefit the county? How does it benefit ITD? It really, it delivers several things that will help us be most efficient and make sure that we're aligned with all departments and aligned with what our constituents' needs are as well. So, the first thing it does is it gives us a roadmap. We know where we're going to be going so we can be more proactive in how we plan, how we allocate resources, things along those lines. So, I've told my team, this is the direction. This is what we're going to be focusing on over the next three years. As you can imagine, when we first sat down to work on this plan, there were literally almost 200 different initiatives that we came up with. Oh, you can't do 200 initiatives in three years, not possible. And so, we had to narrow down those initiatives. And there was a lot of things that we would like to do, but we're just going to have to either do those at a later date. But we really decided to focus on, okay, what are the initiatives that are going to deliver the most value to our constituents, make our staff more productive and efficient? So, we really honed in on those. The second thing it does is it allows us to establish prioritization. We really needed to put a list of, okay, what are the most important things and then work our way down that list. And so, we went through a process there where we decided, okay, these are the most important things, we're going to tackle those first. And again, as you see in the plan, there's a timeline over the next three years. The third thing it does is it allows us to be most effective at allocating the resources that we have, right? So, not only financial resources, but our staffing. How are we going to be able to accomplish all these things? And then, we want to make sure that we have, when we chose these initiatives, that we're going to have the capability and the capacity to accomplish those. As I mentioned earlier, the fourth thing it does is it allows us to be far more strategic and proactive. It's very easy for IT to fall into kind of a reactive firefighting mode because it's the nature of what we do, fix problems. But the problem is if you're only just focusing on fixing problems, you never really are getting ahead. And so, this allows us to say, okay, yes, we're always going to have reactive things that we have to address because things break, but we have to make sure that our team is on the same page in regards to, these are the things that we've got to just get done. And so, that's, it's helpful to, again, have that roadmap of where we're going. The last thing is just as we looked at these initiatives, as we met with departments, we wanted to make sure that there was countywide alignment. This wasn't just ITD saying, okay, this is what we're going to do. This is, no, we want to get feedback from technology professionals in other departments, make sure that we're on the same page, that we're addressing the needs of all departments within the county. And so, I think it does, by having a visible plan, it allows there to be that alignment so we all know, okay, this is where we're heading in the future. So, those are the five primary benefits of having this technology modernization plan. And so, just want to share, within the plan, you know, there are numerous initiatives, but really, if I was going to pull out kind of some of the biggest initiatives that we're working on, the first is we're modernizing our communication. This has been one that's really, I would say, we've, you know, we're a little bit behind on and that is, as you know, we have a legacy phone system that's been there a long time. And so, working on modernizing our phone system internally within the county, we're about two-thirds of the way done with our public safety radio network. So, moving from an analog system that's been there for several decades to a digital-based public safety radio network that should be completed in the next calendar year. The next one that we just in the last 18 months have really been focusing on is AI governance and AI technologies. And so, we've made some good progress there and I'm happy to, if you want me to go into more detail on that, I'm happy to do that. The third one is data governance and data reporting. So, this is one that I get a lot of requests for is, how can we have better access to current data in an easy, you know, easy format, right? How can I find information on whatever it is much easier? And so, this is a big one that we're working on right now. The fourth one is cybersecurity improvements. This is a, there is no finish line when it comes to cybersecurity. The bad guys are always one step ahead and so, we just have to continue to invest in our cybersecurity posture to make sure that we're doing the best we can to minimize those risks that are out there. And then lastly is Workday. We've, I'm happy to announce, as you all know, that we went live about two weeks ago with the first phase of Workday, which is the financials, and it has been successful. We've had a successful launch with relatively very few problems. So, very excited about that. But round two, phase two is just around the corner. We've got to get started on phase two, which is the payroll and the HR portion of Workday. So, we're going to start working on phase two here in the very near future and that's going to be, you know, it's going to take a lot of our resources, but it's something that we absolutely are committed to completing in the next few years and going fully live with Workday and the investment that we made into Workday. So, those are just a handful of ones that I picked out of the, out of the modernization plan that we're focused on. So, just wanted to share those. So, that's my update. I just wanted to provide this to you all so that you had an opportunity to see this and then also just to be able to give you an opportunity to ask whatever questions you might have about what we're doing today or what we're focusing on in the next three years and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much Director Turwen. Supervisor Hartman?
Well, I really appreciate this. I think other departments don't come to us as regularly to share their planning and particularly because yours is a new department and to have visibility into that. I guess I'm curious about, you know, the long list of over 100 initiatives and what got left out, but particularly, could you talk about GIS and mapping? Because I know you were looking at that and I'm not sure where it fits here. And so, could you elaborate?
Yeah, absolutely. So, when I joined the county about three years ago, the GIS initiatives within the county were very siloed. They were kind of department-specific and we didn't have a, I would say, kind of a unified GIS strategy. About two years ago, we hired a full-time GIS manager to come in and who had a lot of experience with GIS. She's done a fantastic job of bringing all the departments together to start collaborating on where are we going with GIS? How can we work together to make sure we're maximizing the efficiency of the resources that we have? Esri is the largest GIS software provider on the market and we, at that point, two years ago, also went in with a enterprise agreement with Esri. And so, we have a lot more tools now than we've ever had before that are part of the overall GIS kind of ecosystem. And so, over the past two years, we've launched the enterprise version of Esri and so, we're all sharing the same licensing now. And we, just recently, in the last month, we added a new module of Esri, which is the indoor mapping, which now gives us the ability to map all of our office spaces, which will help general services with their office planning and just give us more capabilities with that tool. And we're implementing or integrating the GIS tools with some of our existing tools that we have. So, for example, we're in the process right now of integrating Esri with Acela. And so, when our citizens go in and start looking at their permitting and things like that, it will tie into the Esri GIS system. So, that's just one example of what we're doing. So, making significant progress there on that front. One other thing I'll mention is we, over the past year, we signed a contract with an aerial imagery company that has now flown over our entire county with high-res images. And instead of, again, different departments doing different pieces and cities doing their own thing, we were able to get the cities to come in with us and all subscribe to the same license. So, we all ended up paying less than we would have if we would have done this individually. And now, we're collaborating as a county and the cities, all sharing that same license, that same software. And so, that's just an example of really working together to just be more productive and efficient in how we're using those type of technologies.
That's inspiring.
Thank you.
Supervisor Lee?
Thank you. Just a question about AI. Do you plan to use AI in the 911 phone system eventually?
That's a good question. I don't have a specific answer to that. We would, I would need to sit down with Sheriff and also talk with the state who manages the 911 system to talk about their plans. So, I'll have to get back to you on that one. That's a, that's a good question.
Got it. The weird thing is language. If someone, say, from China is visiting and they can't speak English, they can call 911 and AI can translate.
Yeah. It makes sense, absolutely. And I'm sure there are plans, I just, I just don't specifically know.
Thank you.
But I will follow up with you on that.
Thank you. Yeah, I very appreciate having to put a three-year plan into a simple document is challenging. You did a great job. As you know, I'm most interested in how our public interfaces with our county on our websites and our processes. And so, can you just discuss how this plan will help streamline the process so that our public can interface with their government more quickly, more cheaply?
Yeah.
What gains are we making with Acela? I know a few of our departments are moving to Acela. Permitting process is really top of mind for me.
Yeah, so similar to what I just mentioned about GIS where it used to be very kind of decentralized, we're looking at centralizing many of the applications that we use at the county. So, for, with Acela, for example, about a year ago, we formed a Acela steering committee. So, all the departments that use Acela now meet on a monthly basis collaborating on, you know, what we're working on. So, that's been very helpful. We also recognize, like with Acela, we were, we were, we were a little bit behind in terms of what we were offering our constituents. And so, we knew that we needed both the expertise and we just needed the resource to be able to speed up the process of really leveraging the Acela tool more effectively. So, about three months ago, we brought on a independent contractor who has deep experience in Acela. He joined our county and has been doing fantastic work in regards to, again, bringing the departments together. Let's put together a plan of how can we work more effectively with the Acela tool. And so, we're making, again, very good process there or progress there. The integration with Esri is a big one. The integration with Bluebeam, Bluebeam is the, more the construction permitting side of things. So, that integration is taking place and we're improving that integration all the time. We're also interviewing or researching AI solutions with the permitting processes as well. There's some new AI tools that are out there that some cities and counties are using. So, we're looking at those and how can we implement AI with the permitting process? And so, I would say that we've already made significant strides in the last six months with like Acela, but I think you're going to see a lot more in the next six months as well. So, we'll keep you posted on what we're doing there. But I think that in general, to answer your question, it really is, our focus is on the enterprise applications, whether it's websites or GIS or Acela, is bringing the departments together to gather their input, to gather what their needs are and saying, how can we work on this collectively, make sure we're heading in the same direction and put together plans, strategic plans for each one of those so that we have a roadmap of what we're trying to accomplish, working on it together. So, yeah, I would say great progress so far and a lot more to come in the near future as well.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I know, I know you're, there's a lot of investment with Acela and there's some AI tools that are being utilized and I sent you, because a constituent sent me an article about Bakersfield being the first city in the nation that's going completely AI when it comes to building permits and only charging $15 because their system is completely AI-generated. So, that means getting a permit for $15, which I shared with our planning director. That's very aspirational, but I just think, yeah, easy for me to say, but it sounds very, it sounds very appealing and I understand that there's, there's some real potential with Acela.
Yeah, absolutely.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Supervisor Hartman?
Thank you. I want to see that house. It probably has like four front doors or something. Your $15 permit.
Yeah.
I think we're moving there though. I mean, at some point, that's, that's, my question is, so I know, you have an AI work group, correct?
We do.
Okay. Can you just kind of tell us who's part of that and what you guys are discussing and where you see if there's any advancement that you've made or something that's interesting that you see that might really help our constituents down the road?
Yes, so we actually have two different AI groups at the county. We have an AI working group, which is comprised of about 50 to 60 different staff members from around the county, from all departments. That group is more, I would say, focused on education and awareness. And then, we have a smaller group that has 12 members from 12 different departments. That is our steering committee and they're meeting about every three weeks to work on primarily governance right now. So, we, you probably saw about six months ago, we published the AI guidelines and we're now going to be coming back to the board in September. I don't have a date yet, but in one of the September meetings, we're going to be coming to the board with the new countywide AI policies. So, that's what we've been working on is putting together the governance first because it's so important to know what the guardrails are, what we can and cannot do, and a large part of that is just education. And so, we'll be coming back with those AI policies. So, that's on the governance side. On the, on the actual AI tools, we've been spending a lot of time doing research on, okay, what are the various tools out there? What are other counties and cities doing? And so, I've personally attended several conferences in the last few months just asking those questions, you know, what are the public sector organizations doing with AI? And what I've found is that we're very, I would say, we're on target with our approach and that is governance first, education, training and awareness, and then implementing the tools. And so, some of the specific tools we're looking at are, yes, around the permitting process. We've interviewed with several different AI tools. We're working closely with Microsoft on looking at Copilot to help our staff be able to do their jobs more efficiently. In fact, my department right now is testing Copilot and so, we're going to continue to test it and, and kind of kick the tires and see how it's working. And then, we've also looked at AI tools for a lot of other areas within the county as well, just to get a better sense of what's out there and how can it benefit, you know, our county. We just have to be very careful in the sense that AI can be very powerful and so, we need to make sure primarily from a cybersecurity perspective and a complacency perspective that we're not implementing something that could potentially open a door to create some bigger problems. And so, I would say we're taking a cautious and guarded approach, but I think that's the right approach. But it's, it's a, AI is a big wave that's coming upon us and so, we want to make sure that we're leveraging it, but in a wise and efficient manner.
And last question for me is just on, so I would imagine even an employee that you hired two or three years ago probably had no foreknowledge of AI. So, how are we training your, just even in your department, let alone somebody in like my office?
Right.
I mean, how is your, you know, your experts, how are they upgrading their education and moving forward on AI?
Yeah, so we're testing within ITD right now. There's a third-party AI training company that we're, I blank on the name of it. I don't know if you know, Andre, what it is, but we're, we're using them. I don't know if you know, Andre, what it is, but we're, we're using them and testing their training to see how it is, because we don't want to launch it if it's not great. So we're doing some internal testing there. Central HR has already offered, I believe, five or six different AI courses, that I've attended several of those, and those have been well-attended. In fact, those are the, the most attended training that they offer. They sell out every single time they offer it. So there's a, there's a demand for learning AI and becoming more familiar with AI. So we're going to continue to work primarily with Central HR to make sure that we're offering effective AI training for county staff, because it's, what you bring up is critically important, that AI is a tool. But if you don't know how to use the tool effectively, we're not going to maximize our ability to use it. So that's a big, big piece of it. I agree with you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, any questions, I mean, comments from the public?
Chair Capps and members of the board, we have no requests to speak from the public on this item.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion for staff recommendation. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, second by Supervisor Lavigne now. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Director Germaine.
Thank you.
And thanks to your team.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to take a 10-minute break, get back around 11:12.
Okay, welcome back. We will now proceed to departmental item number four.
Chair Caps and members of the board, departmental item number four is from the county executive office. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding an amendment to chapter 50 of the county code, Licensing of Cannabis Operations.
Good morning Chair Caps, members of the board. Brittany Oderman, Deputy CEO. And I will be turning this over to our cannabis program manager Carmela Beck.
Good morning Chair Caps and members of the board. Today I will present proposed amendments to chapter 50, Licensing of Cannabis Operations. Today's proposed amendment pertains to the requested acreage cap reduction in the Carpinteria Agricultural Overlay District and in the unincorporated area outside of the Carpinteria Agricultural Overlay District, and request additional board direction regarding the county's cannabis program. At the March 18th, 2025 board meeting, staff received direction to provide acreage cap reduction options. At the June 3rd, 2025 board meeting, the board gave direction to change the acreage cap ordinance amendments in alignment with proposed option three to include issued, approved, and submitted acres excluding processing acres. As a refresher, the issued category includes all acreage with issued and vested land use entitlements. The approved category includes applicants with an approved but not yet issued land use entitlement. And the submitted category includes application acreage under review but not yet approved or issued. The current slide shows a breakdown of the number of acres allocated to each of the aforementioned categories. After reviewing all issued and approved land use entitlements, including all submitted applications in the queue, staff is proposing the following reduced acreage caps. The Carpinteria Overlay cap will decrease from 186 acres to 134 acres, which is a reduction of 52 acres. The unincorporated area cap will decrease from 1,575 acres to 1,417 acres, which is a reduction of 158 acres. If the proposed amendment is passed, chapter 50, section 50-7 titled Limits on Cannabis Business Licenses will be modified in the two areas referenced on this slide to include the updated reduced acres. In summary, the proposed reduced acreage cap for the Carpinteria Overlay is 134 acres, and the proposed reduced acreage cap for the unincorporated area is 1,417 acres. If approved, the new ordinance language will be effective 30 days from second reading on August 26th. Staff is seeking board approval for the proposed chapter 50 ordinance amendments and other direction as appropriate. In closing, staff recommends that the board consider the introduction of an ordinance to the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Barbara amending chapter 50 of the Santa Barbara County Code, Licensing of Cannabis Operations, to reduce the cultivation acreage cap to 134 acres in the Carpinteria Agricultural Overlay and to 1,417 acres in the unincorporated area outside of the Carpinteria Agricultural Overlay. Wave full reading of the ordinance, provide any other direction, and set the second reading and sequer hearing for August 26th. Thank you. That concludes today's presentations. We're available to answer questions.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Lee.
I just want to say great presentation. It's short and sweet. So I just want to flag this for staff that the odor, cannabis odor in Carpenter Valley is getting worse. I now smell from my house where I never has done before, as well as my business, which is well far away from any cannabis grow. I just want to let you know that it's getting worse, not better. And I heard from many community members, including the city council and city staff, that it is much, much stronger. So what can be done or what tools do you need to make sure that we enforce it?
Thank you Supervisor Lee through the chair. Jeff Wilson is here from the Planning and Development Department to speak on the odor issue since that department is responsible for enforcing the odor abatement plans that the operators have in place. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I think my answer is longer than the presentation you just heard. To Supervisor Lee's question, just a quick update as far as those ordinance amendments that we did earlier this year. Last week, the Coast Commission took an item to extend their response time. They've asked for a year, but they've indicated to us that they do anticipate being able to review those ordinance amendments sooner than a year. However, just as a background, we do have an existing ordinance in place. We do have approved entitlements. We have improved odor abatement plans. Those are all enforceable. So in answer to the question as far as what can be done, currently, we are continuing to do odor inspections to ensure that the odor abatement plans that have been approved are working when we're out there. This year, we've done six of those inspections. Odor inspections are to ensure that the efficacy of the odor abatement plans are working. We've received about 136 complaints, about 60 to 70% request a follow-up, which we've done. And then we've also, in addition to that, about 10% of those, we've reached out with phone calls and additional information. But looking at the existing tools that we have, we have an opportunity to focus on holding operators accountable to the approved odor abatement plan, which includes, do they have adequate contact information for the members of the public to receive complaints, respond to complaints? Are they responding to complaints and ensuring that they are responding to the complaints from the citizens or the public? And are their systems operating when those complaints come in? But I think the opportunity we have also while we're waiting for those ordinance amendments to be certified by the Coast Commission is to identify those hotspots that we talked about earlier this year. That seems to be indicative that there is an issue that's occurring out there. As Supervisor Lee has indicated, occurrences of odor in the area may not necessarily be a violation of the ordinance if it's not observed in residential zone, but it is a trigger that there is something occurring out there. So one of the things that we're discussing and coming up with strategy is how do we do unannounced odor inspections? So that way, we can go out there and observe whether or not they're actually running those. They've plugged in the systems, or they're running their misters the way they're supposed to be. So those are some tools that we have already that we're looking at implementing in order to address some of these concerns that we're hearing from the public.
Thank you for that answer. And yeah, I appreciate the move to lower the cap and to move us in this right direction. Appreciate Supervisor Lee's leadership on this. Madam Clerk, any comments from the public on this?
Chair Caps and members of the board, we have no requests to speak from the public on this item.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I move staff recommendation A, B, C, and D. A, B, C, E. A through C.
And I will second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we will then move to the next item, which is departmental item number five.
Chair Caps and members of the board, departmental item number five is from the county executive office. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding a response to the 2024 through 2025 grand jury report on cannabis taxation and expenditures.
Chair Caps, members of the board, I am Brittany Oderman again. And I just wanted to kick this off by thanking the grand jury for their research and thorough analysis of the cannabis program expenditures. As our responses indicate, and you'll hear from our manager Ms. Beck shortly, the county is aligned with the grand jury's desire to maintain the efficiency and solvency of the cannabis program. And the report provides an opportunity to reflect on the good work and due diligence of your board immediately prior to the publication of their report. So I will turn it over to Ms. Beck, and she will walk us through. There were five findings and recommendations. Thanks.
All right. So good afternoon Chair Caps and members of the board. As mentioned, I will present the response to the cannabis taxation and expenditures grand jury report. On June 20th, 2025, the 2024-2025 Santa Barbara County Grand Jury distributed a report titled Cannabis Taxation and Expenditures that was focused on rightsizing the cannabis program expenditures considering program contraction and diminishing revenues. The report lists five findings and five recommendations in two categories, including cannabis tax revenue and expenditures, and cannabis tax oversight, compliance, and enforcement. The board is required to respond to the findings and recommendations listed in the report within 90 days by September 18th, 2025. The cannabis program is committed to ensuring a well-regulated cannabis industry, which includes managing an efficient licensing and taxation program, works to achieve program full cost recovery for licensing activities, and ensures a balanced cannabis budget. In order to achieve this goal, eight divisions and departments are actively engaged in the cannabis business licensing activities and work in collaboration to ensure compliance with chapter 50. Additionally, your board adopted ordinance amendments to ensure timely payment of cannabis tax revenues, and the treasurer tax collector ensures accurate reporting and payment. CEO staff regularly review cannabis program licensing revenue to achieve full cost recovery, and CEO staff provide quarterly cannabis program updates, including budgeted and revised revenue and quarterly revenue actuals. Four out of the five findings fall under the cannabis tax revenue and expenditures focus area. The first finding suggests that the county's operating expenditures for the cannabis program are stressed because of declining cannabis tax revenues due to various reasons, including market oversupply and price collapse. We agree that cannabis tax revenues are indeed declining and could stress the county's operating expenditures if timely reductions and corrective measures were not recently implemented by your board to right-size cannabis tax revenue spending. The grand jury recommends that the Board of Supervisors ensure that the cannabis program's annual operating expenditures do not exceed annual cannabis tax revenues. This has been implemented. Cannabis tax revenue is not the primary funding source for the cannabis licensing program annual operating expenditures. Operator paid cannabis business licensing fees pay for most cannabis program licensing activities. At the fiscal year 2025-26 budget workshops on April 16th, the board directed the CEO's office to recommend reductions to cannabis revenue expenditures by $1.2 million, enough to cover the budget shortfall and balance the program budget with no planned draw from reserves. The June 17th, 2025 adopted program budget resulted in reducing approximately $1.28 million to close the fiscal year 25-26 ongoing revenue and expenditures gap. Finding number two states that the county's allocation for deferred maintenance and capital project expenses from cannabis tax revenue has not been adjusted to reflect the decline in tax revenue over the past five years. We disagree with this finding. During the fiscal year 2023-24 budget hearings, the board recognized this dip in cannabis revenues and brought ongoing costs in line with projected ongoing revenues by replacing $3,080,000 of ongoing costs in programs and projects unrelated to administration of the cannabis program with other discretionary general revenues. $846,600 of this swap was towards deferred maintenance, reducing the amount of cannabis tax revenue going toward deferred maintenance to the $1,572,800 it remains at today. This represented a 35% reduction in the amount of cannabis tax revenue funding deferred maintenance. The grand jury recommends that the Board of Supervisors revisit its capital projects allocation to be funded by cannabis tax revenues, ensuring that such allocations do not exceed available funds. This has been implemented. The board took direct action on this recommendation at the June 3rd, 2025 hearing prior to issuance of the grand jury report on June 20th, 2025. Capital project expenditures were reviewed and proportional reductions were made to eliminate the budget shortfall and preserve the reserve balance. No new capital projects were added to the fiscal year 2025-26 cannabis budget. Finding number three suggests that the cannabis program ongoing expenditures will exceed expected cannabis tax revenues by $1.1 million in fiscal year 2025-26 and pose a burden on county taxpayers. We partially disagree. The fiscal year 2025-26 cannabis program ongoing expenditures could have exceeded projected cannabis tax revenues if the board had not acted and made appropriate reductions on June 17th, 2025. The grand jury recommends that the Board of Supervisors prioritize covering the direct operating costs of the cannabis program so as to achieve more balanced budgets in the future. This has been implemented. During the budget workshops, the board directed the CEO's office to return with a recommendation to reduce ongoing cannabis program expenditures instead of relying on the fund balance and address the estimated $1.2 million gap. As referenced in the response to finding number one, the board adopted the recommended reductions to achieve a balanced budget. In addition, CEO staff conducted a cannabis licensing and regulation fee study in fiscal year 24-25, which updated fees to achieve licensing program full cost recovery and reduced the CEO licensing team by one full-time equivalent to account for program contraction. Finding number five states that a significant portion of the county's cannabis tax revenues continued to be allocated to combat illicit activity each fiscal year, despite the decrease in illegal activities. We partially disagree. Finding number five was an accurate statement up until fiscal year 2025-26. Historically, the Sheriff Cannabis Enforcement Team budget range between $2 million and $3 million from fiscal year 2018-19 through fiscal year 2024-25, and remains the largest category of program expense. Originally, ongoing expenses were focused on enforcement activities against the illegal market to ensure the new regulated program could prosper. Over the past seven years, the county cannabis program has matured and normalized, necessitating a different approach to cannabis program licensing and enforcement activities. The grand jury recommends that the Board of Supervisors annually reevaluate the allocation of cannabis tax revenue for combating illicit cannabis cultivation activity in the county. This has been implemented. At the June fiscal year 2025-26 budget hearings, county staff presented options to re-envision the sheriff's office enforcement team remaining $1.5 million budget. This review of cannabis tax revenue enforcement uses was timely, considering program contraction and the declining enforcement activities from large-scale raids to fewer, slower, and longer investigations pertaining to alleged diversion and illegal resale of legally purchased products. The board adopted a proposal that reduced the cannabis enforcement team budget dedicated to the illicit market. Two detectives were reassigned to the North and South County Narcotics Teams as cannabis specialists in ongoing positions. The third detective was reassigned to manage the countywide warrants backlogged, funded with one-time monies. Final finding number four falls under the cannabis tax oversight, compliance, and enforcement focus area. This finding asserts that Santa Barbara County's budgeting, tracking, and reporting of cannabis-related revenue, expenses, and compliance violations are decentralized, making it difficult to provide comprehensive and detailed information on demand. We partially disagree. The county's budgeting, tracking, and reporting of cannabis-related revenue and expenses are managed in a centralized financial system accessible by applicable county staff and the treasurer tax collector's office and in the CEO's office. Reports can be run on-demand to provide timely, comprehensive, and detailed information when requested. Cannabis program management licensing documents are managed in Acela, the county's online tracking software. Acela stores applicant applications, inspection dates, and license approvals. The grand jury recommends that the Board of Supervisors direct the county executive officer to develop an automated and centralized information database to track and report the budget, revenues, expenses, and administrative activities related to licensing and compliance specific to the cannabis program. This will not be implemented. The cannabis program utilizes two centralized information databases, a financial system and a licensing system. The financial system includes all budget, revenue, and expenses. The administration of the licensing program, including cannabis business license applications, inspection dates, and the license approvals, is accessible online through Acela. There would be significant cost to integrating both the financial and administrative systems. Although the recommendation will not be implemented, the CEO office is confident that the existing systems provide timely, accurate information upon request. CEO staff tasked with coordinating cross-departmental cannabis business license activities continue to prioritize process improvements to streamline budgeting, licensing, and compliance efforts. In closing, staff recommends that the board consider and adopt the responses in attachment A as the Board of Supervisors' response to the 2024-25 grand jury report entitled Cannabis Taxation and Expenditures. Authorize the chair to sign the letter included in attachment A and forward the letter and responses to the presiding judge of Santa Barbara County Superior Court, and determine that this is not a project subject to sequer review. and determine that this is not a project subject to sequel review. Thank you. That concludes today's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Any questions from the Board? Any requests to speak from the public?
Chair Capson, members of the Board, we have no requests to speak from the public on this item.
Well, I... I know. Well, I think it's, yeah, I think it's not surprising because the Grand Jury really did their work here, but we were also very much aligned almost by the week and got the timing really right and did much of the work that they've outlined that we should have been doing. And so we did it, and thanks to the team and thanks to this Board for providing that direction, and thanks to the CEO's office for outlining many, again, many of the steps that the Grand Jury said that we should be taking. So that's probably why there isn't much to discuss up here and not the need for much discussion or many questions or many comments from the public. So no need to belabor it. I'll entertain a motion.
Hartman moves A through C in today's staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, that was a short departmental item agenda. And with that, we are going to reconvene or we are going to recess to close session. Will County Council please read the items for consideration?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. In closed session today, the Board will consider one item of existing litigation, Frontier versus the County, which is a Santa Barbara Superior Court case. Conference with real property negotiators. The property is 4550 Hollister Avenue in Galita. Agency negotiator is General Services Director Kirk Lagerquist, and negotiating party is Matt Riley, Executive Director of Santa Barbara Volleyball Club. And under negotiations is price and terms of payment. We have a conference with labor negotiators with the Board of Supervisors sitting as the Board of Santa Barbara County Public Authority for in-home supportive services. The employee organization is United Domestic Workers of America Local 3930, and the agency designated representatives are CEO Mona Miasato and Social Services Director Danielle Nielsen. We also have a conference with labor negotiators sitting as the Board of Supervisors for all bargaining units on representative employees, managers, and executives. And the agency representatives are CEO Mona Miasato and Human Resources Director Christine Schmidt. And finally, we have public employee appointment for county fire chief. And the estimate is approximately one hour. Of course, we might come back a little bit sooner or a little bit later than that.
Okay, so estimate about an hour. We will be back. Thank you.
County Council, can you please report us out from closed session?
Thank you Madam Chair, members of the board. The board met in closed session on one item of existing litigation Frontier versus Santa Barbara County. Real property negotiations for 4550 Hollister Avenue. Labor negotiations for United Domestic Workers of America and all bargaining units, unrepresented employees, managers and executives. And public employee appointment for county fire chief. And the board took no reportable action.
Okay, thanks everybody. We are adjourned until next Tuesday.